Projects. In the capital improvement budget, we request to do some work on the courthouse front steps. That will be a project that will have to go out to bid because of the amount. So there's four plus these two. And then we have yet to look at Lund because we haven't done, we haven't been there to kind of investigate how that sewer is tight in. So what that will mean to that project for the restrooms and showers.
Why don't we do this? Let's do each one of them separate because when we request, we'll give you permission to go and take that direction to get an engineer from McGill. And when we do Ruth's item, we get an engineer for Ruth and separate them all three. And then if we find out later, we can combine the three, that would be okay. But for right now, we have three different items for three different communities?
Yeah, well, in the way it's agenda, you're just taking action to tell Bill to go solicit an engineer as a professional. That's all the action we need to take.
Can I do the all, do the?
Yeah, you can do nine and ten together.
Okay, then I'll, we have nine, Ren. I'll read ten and he'll ask our motion. Is that okay? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Item ten is discussion for possible action, the approval to give a direction on how to proceed with capital improvement project, Ruth Fire Station paving, rough estimate cost, Bill called to it. So I'll ask our motion to approve nine and ten.
I make a motion to go approve to give direction to, to our Public Works Director on these items.
Move their second.
Motion by Lori and the second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Clark.
What?
For clarification, do an RFQ for these, these two plus there'll be another one. I mean, is that how we'll proceed?
For the engineer?
An RFQ for an engineer and then if I, if I select the committee, then it doesn't have to be, we don't have to take minutes.
It's fast.
Boss selects.
Okay.
Stream line.
Okay.
As long as it's for the NRS.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you select without the committee for the RFQ, then it becomes different for us. So that slows it down.
So, Mike, are we good with the motion and the second? Who do we have to add there?
No, that motion and that approval was for both items nine, just for the record, and item ten.
Correct.
Okay. And that is done. Bill, you can start soliciting an engineer.
We will have to.
Yes, thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Lori. Okay, we are now down to item eleven. Item eleven is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the following fire district meeting, July tenth, two thousand nineteen, special joint with McGill Town Council on July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Will bring motion with approval.
Approved.
Motion by Travis and the second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are now through the fire district meeting. The last thing on the fire commission meeting is public comment. Based on what we've just discussed now, is there any public comment? Are you on public comment?
Public comment.
Okay.
Just wanted for clarification for the board's sake, as far as the coordination of efforts with the new fire chief and Ralph in transition period, September first will be Ralph's last day. So he's agreed to stay through September first, make sure that we haven't seen much transition. So just wanted to make sure the board's aware of that.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on what we just discussed with the fire district? Ross?
How are you?
Good.
Sorry it's late. You gave up reports for the last two months. Sorry that we're both late. We're going to coordinate that better. So is there any questions?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, I'm sorry it was late. I just wanted to bring you up to another little problem. We had a medical transport from Ruth and this individual just needed to get a ride to go to surgery. So his last resort was to call for the ambulance and the sheriff's office, one that pay up emergency services just for a ride. So through, through our efforts, he was able to contact even bus. The guy didn't have two dollars for a ride. So I said, I want to pay the two dollars. But I didn't know if there's anything you guys could do with health human services that might be able to work something out on some of the issues. We talked with hospital, because hospital is the one that Phil recalled, an amputee. And that's not where her work tape is.
Yeah. Have you met with social services on this issue yet?
No, not yet. This, this just happened. That's why I was late getting.
Well, let's, let's, yeah, let's meet on that and find out what the options are.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't want to tie up the ambulance. Somebody has a heart attack and we're trying to recruit an ambulance and, you know, we've been busy. So we have multiple calls. It's just not, you can do.
Change the liaison, he'll give a few days here and we'll get something down.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment there on the fire district? Last call.
I would just like to really quickly take a quick second to thank Ralph McQuentuck. Ralph stepped into a job with, with great experience and knowledge and what he's done for us to bring some unity into our fire district and put, get these people working and bring us together as a fire commission and a fire district. I just don't think we could have done this job without him and I just wanted to personally thank you, Ralph.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ralph.
And I, I think that possibly if we can get a letter of recognition or a commemorative letter or some type of gift for Ralph, can we do that? It's not agenda, but.
Put on our next agenda.
Yeah, we could on our next agenda to send a letter on the page and.
Yeah.
Okay, any other public comment? Last call. Public comment in the fire district? Hearing none, seeing none. We will close the fire, the fire district and reopen the county commission meeting. We will go to page three, item B. It's a nine o'clock presentation by the Department of Transportation. Item one is a presentation discussion of possible action, acceptance of NDOT's two thousand nineteen transportation report for White Pine County, the statewide transportation improvement program, and the annual work program. Murph Glover, government and tribal liaison associate, and Lee Bonner, PMP, CSSBB, whatever that means. So we welcome your, your, your presentation. We'd like you to keep it as brief as you possibly can.
Be more than happy to. Good morning Chairman Howell, members of the county commission. For the record, my name is Cole Mortensen and I am a deputy director for Nevada Department of Transportation. As you just mentioned, we're here to present our county work program, which is also part of our overall One Nevada plan. What we've seen this year is a number of changes in leadership from the governor to lieutenant governor, controller, all members of our board. We also had Rudy Malphabon, the former director retire and he was replaced with Christina Swallow. I am new to my role in the department. I was appointed a deputy director here in July. On the right-hand side of the screen, you have other senior leadership in the audience. We also have Boyd Ratliff, District Three, District Engineer. And so we'll get moving on to the presentation here. One of the things that we like to do when we go around the counties is to recognize individuals that have been instrumental in sharing the department's vision. And today what we'd like to do is recognize Chairman Howell for his efforts and his participation in what we do. And so we would like to present him with a small token of our appreciation as a transportation champion. And so if I may, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
If we could get a picture. Possibly this quick picture?
You have, you got a camera?
Yep.
Always have a camera. Everyone has.
Good thing and bad thing.
Thank you. I'm a pain in their side with the item eleven project, so I keep on having.
But, but we appreciate your efforts.
They hear pretty often. Thank you very much for this. I appreciate it. Thank you. Wasn't necessary.
Nice job, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so what we want to do real quickly here, this slide has a lot of information on it. This is kind of shows what White Pine County overall contributes in state and federal gas tax. As you can see, it totals about two point five million dollars. Next slide. The good news is, is with the projects that NDOT does in White Pine County, we've averaged about six point six million dollars. So you can see that you're getting more projects than the tax revenue contribution is. So again, there's more information here and we also provided you with additional information in the booklet there for White Pine County. Each year we come around, we do workshops and we try to understand and make sure that we're in step with what White Pine County's priorities are. As you guys are aware, we're responsible for trying to prioritize projects statewide. So we understand these are your priorities and so we try to fit priorities in where we can. With this discussion, the top two priorities that we understand are US ninety-three passing lanes and the SR three eighteen passing lane near Blackjack Junction. We can re-prioritize this. This list isn't necessarily in order. Generally, that kind of happens at the workshop, but later you'll get an opportunity to have that discussion if you'd like. We're also just going to ask for your acceptance of this work program at this time. I'd like to thank Assemblyman Ellison. A couple of weeks ago, he did notify us of the additional crash in front lanes truck stop. We are having our safety group look at this. Here is a report on the crashes that we've had between two thousand thirteen and two thousand and eighteen. The point that I wanted to bring up with this slide is that there have been a number of various reasons for those accidents. And as we look for a solution at that location, we'll have to consider, you know, what the right solution is. Assemblyman Ellison mentioned the Nevada Highway Patrol earlier. Many of you may not know, we also try to get highway patrolmen in our work zones when we have construction out there to try to keep our staff as well as the contractor and traveling publics safe. We're having difficulty even hiring them to come work on our jobs. And it's my understanding that they're running about a forty percent vacancy rate right now. So the, the issue that we're seeing statewide is they're just not, they can't, they can't hire and they're not there. But I of course can't speak on their behalf, but I just thought I would mention that. Next slide I wanted to talk about real briefly is the downtown Ely project. Those of you that are familiar with it, we had originally budgeted about seven million dollars for it, then it went to about fourteen million dollars and then it blossomed to about fifty million dollars. And where this becomes a problem for us is that we don't have the budget for it. So what we've done is we've changed the delivery method to a construction manager at risk, where we brought a contractor in to try to help us figure out how to reduce the budget and how to potentially phase the project so that we can better deliver it. Right now, we're looking at delivering project A, which will be the safety in Greenwich. It's going to be open to Great Basin. We anticipate it going to the transportation board in January of two thousand twenty with construction starting in the spring of next year. Next slide. This is our two thousand twenty work program highlights. As you can see, most of the work that's being done in White Pine County are going to be maintenance projects for us. We also have Northern Nevada Railway Museum project there as well. Next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, the suggested motion here is to either modify the top two county priorities or concerns and/or just to accept the two thousand twenty fiscal year annual work program.
Okay. Any commissioner got anything to, as far as prioritizing the state's items? We have Wells ninety-three down and we have main truck stop. Am I right in that? Your one and two was that?
I believe that two was the passing lanes near Blackjack Junction. I, that's not.
I don't think it's in Siberia.
But we also do have lanes truck stop. We actually have it up there on the list twice.
Okay.
I move to make lanes one and two.
Either that, I would also like to add, because of the impact with everything else, I would like to add for two would be the main street. Thing that's been going on because that impacted, we were not able to bring in any of the broadband down to the high school with any of that at all. It just, as far as the infrastructure.
Okay.
So it's, it's holding up everything else to come this way.
What is?
Donna, you, you've been at those meetings more than I have. Could I impose on you to give a, just a brief thing as our representative of the NR, our DA, that what changing the scope of deliverables, what it impacted?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Donna, that NRDA, economic development for White Pine and Rica County. In anticipation of having the main street project completed first, we have numerous things that, we have several committees that are working on several things for downtown Ely.
And we've contributed money to this.
Yes. White Pine County and the city of Ely did contribute. The city of Ely, I think, put in one point five million. I don't want to speak for them on where that money was supposed to go. They received a CDG, CDBG grant this year and they amounted two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, which would be used in the Murray Street project. Ultimately ties into what, what happened in the main street project. It was kind of a surprise for us to catch, be caught off guard to have the main street portion tabled, if you will, and the other project moving forward. Fully understand the need, need for everything. I, I heard Mr. Mortensen say the main street project was a fifty million dollar project and I, I don't think that was a correct figure. If you go back and look, I haven't had time to go back and research all the records, but the main street area of this project has been on the books, I believe, since two thousand and seven. I can document it to two thousand and eleven. I presented them at their public meeting with the minutes of the city council meeting in two thousand and eleven that Kathy Weaver, then the district engineer, brought a drawing and it included the main street project. You know, ultimately, I guess it's going to be NDOT's decision, but it's a severe impact to us economically.
Yeah. Would you talk about the, the things that put on hold that don't tell in, into it, what the broadband that we, things move?
Okay, as you know, we work on several things for economic development. One of those is bringing broadband down into downtown Ely. One of the reasons that our downtown looks the way it does right now is that we cannot attract businesses down there. If they can't run a credit card or a debit transaction, it's pretty hard. Some of the business can't afford to do that. Kathy, a friend of Campos Myers from the governor's office, has been helping us with the broadband for over two and a half years? I think it's about two and a half years that we've been working on this. She's been a champion for White Pine County, bringing this broadband down. It would get the broadband to our hundred-plus-year-old middle school, reliable broadband. As you all know, you have internet here in Ely. You know it's open when open, closed when closed. We cannot move forward economically and expand our community and the services and attract new businesses unless we have the basics. And the broadband coming down here, we're working right now to still be able to put that broadband in without this project, but it was a severe blow to us to learn about this being put on hold. The broadband would then go with the E-rate. Elizabeth has been working on this. It would give broadband accessibility to Steptoe Valley High School, who's eligible for the E-rate program. The middle school, the library, they're all eligible for E-rate. What the E-rate program does is pay a large percentage of putting that infrastructure into our buildings and that would allow the courthouse at a reduced cost, because it's already at the library, to be able to expand the broadband into the courthouse. So it's kind of a chain reaction. And if there's any way possible that we could find that additional money, I, I, I heard it was fifteen million, but now with fifty million, I'm not really sure if we could clarify what that would be. I don't know if it would help to send a letter to the governor's office. We're certainly working with our US senators. I've been in contact with them on trying to find federal funds. We were notified that they were planning with federal guidelines, but they have not asked for federal funds yet. So we're going to work on that and working on that with the mayor's office and try and work with our federal delegation to see if we can find some federal funding. But it, it's pretty hard to move your county or your city forward economically if you don't have the basics that you need and if you can't present a nice looking front. The other thing that, that we're very concerned about, and I do want to thank Steve again, is the safety issue that with the traffic lights being removed out of our downtown. Those mine trucks and just traffic in, in general come flying down off of the hill from Ruth and they hit the middle school and they're, they're going pretty fast. We have our boys and girls club. These kids are this big.
Excuse me, just to get, what Donna is saying is those bicycle routes and the, the two lanes moving back and forth are not going to happen yet because of the changes. So we're just going to have two lanes going and two lanes coming with no traffic lights.
So for the purpose of, of this agenda item and prioritizing the top two, we don't have on this list yet the downtown project because it was already moving forward. But now that it's been taken off.
Yes.
You're asking, there's a motion, there was a motion to, to make the top two priorities working down, the safety concerns at lanes. You're concerned with that.
And I think that would, I would, I would think that that should be number one, but I would like to at least make this number two.
Well, let's articulate it so we can have it in the motion.
Okay. Oh, I didn't think he had finished his motion. My apologies.
Yeah. So you have a motion for lanes as one, the traffic, the safety concerns, because it's up there as number three, but we want to make that number one. And then what do you want, number two? How do you want it to read, working with Donna? And I mean, the whole enchilada for downtown or do you want, I mean, how do you want this to see for a second priority?
What, what we need to understand and I guess what I don't understand right now, and we did have some meetings with NDOT and we appreciate that.
Funds, the funding did not keep pace.
Right.
Originally with the increases of just time, like we have on the record since two thousand and eleven. It was a total of sixteen million dollars.
Twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty-six million. Now that has jumped to a.
Over fifty something. So the whole thing, from the flood mitigation to the redoing the, the traffic control and infrastructure.
During that time, for whatever reasons, I guess they don't normally address it until it moves forward. Well, it was, if we had known that there was going to be a shortfall of, to that extent, we could have been working on this.
Okay.
But that didn't happen. But I don't feel like that NDOT, and I don't know if some of this had to do with when we were sitting down, when the commission was sitting down and having their priorities on their annual reports, that this came through, that there, you know, as time was going on with inflation and everything else, that this did not move with it. This project did not move with it.
No, the last couple of updates, we've been discussing the black, the passing lanes and some of the other stuff. That's why that stuff's in there already.
Right.
So how do you want to articulate our second priority?
I think we need to discuss what each commissioner thinks priority two would be. We've heard.
Sure, but just for the purpose of motion, you know, I mean, she can say she'd like to amend that motion to be, to include allocating funding to the completion of downtown project, right? And then.
Donna, would you, would you say that that would cover it? I'm sorry.
Allocate, allocation of funding to complete the downtown project in its entirety.
Yes, and, and if I could back up and, I'm still trying to understand this.
Yeah.
But I just think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the downtown was certainly discussed and on the city's priority.
Sure.
Maybe not necessarily for the county. But I think economically, we've got to partner with the city if we want to move this community forward. So I, even though it's not up here.
Not, yeah.
Right.
Right. And so my, what I'm trying to do right now is, we have a big ball of wax, which is this downtown issue. And we have, we're just trying to do our priorities for NDOT for the purpose of this motion. And I'm just trying to articulate.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying and if we had found out about this sooner, we wouldn't have been able to do more with it.
Okay.
But this, like, within the last week that I found out about it.
Just going to say, amend my.
We all found out.
We all found out.
amend the motion for number one, lanes, truck stop area. Number two, to get the downtown project going and as soon as possible, put the traffic light up for the meantime downtown.
Okay. We have a motion by Travis to change it, number one, to lanes truck stop, or we'll use that term.
Yep.
And number two, the, number two would be moved up to the downtown project.
To prioritize that as, to look at the, I mean, the infrastructure, the funding and get that project moving. Downtown project, let's say downtown.
Right, because, because the problem is there's no, there's now no traffic lights. So that's just.
I understand. There, NDOT's going to have to look at that and see if there's an issue with that. I mean, that's.
And where specifically do you want that traffic signal?
There used to be one right there.
That where it was?
Was that fourth? What is that, Donna?
Fifth street.
Fifth street.
Fifth street.
It was removed in anticipation of this project and I think it needs to be looked at whether that's necessary or not. So that's your motion, prioritize the lane safety concerns is number one, and the downtown project is number two, is to finish effort, to get that project moving. So that's your motion. It's amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Travis.
I, I don't agree with the downtown project as being number two. I think passing lanes between Lund and Las Vegas is more of a priority to me than the downtown project, because the downtown project has been put on hold, has been on hold by forever. What is more important? So each commissioner, and I, I'm just speaking what I think number two should be, and that's what we're here for. We're here to prioritize as a commission, one and two. I got no problem with one. One is okay. But my, I feel that the number two priority, because of the deaths and all the traffic and all the distance between Ely and Las Vegas, two hundred and fifty miles with absolutely no passing lane, is more important than doing the downtown project, which is a fifty million dollar project, roughly about that, and has been put on hold because of, you just explained, there's all kinds of, there's no money for that. So right now, we're looking at two thousand nineteen, twenty. I'm trying to narrow this down to what we want right now. So the downtown project has been put on hold. We understand that. So what is our one priority? Lanes, truck stop. I'm good. What is our number two project? Mine, my opinion, way more important than the downtown because it's been on hold. My number two project on my list would be the passing lane somewhere between Lund and Las Vegas. We have no, there's not a passing lane between Ely and Las Vegas for two hundred and fifty miles. So you get five semis on, on Murray Summit, you're stuck. You're flat out. You're, you're going nowhere for two hundred and fifty miles. That would be my second choice. So we've listened to Travis's motion and Lori made the second, which is the downtown, the number one lane is downtown number two. I'm just adding my two cents worth, which I'm allowed to. And my second priority is probably even more so, is the passing lanes are more important to me now between Ely and Las Vegas than the downtown project. Right? And I welcome any other commissioner to add their two cents, then we'll call for the vote. How's that? Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just be happy to see one get done because it hasn't got done since last fall.
But we're trying to get, we're trying to get one too. We're trying to find out what our one and two are. We know what number one is, I think. Now, what would be number two? And I welcome any other commissioners input. Shane, you got?
Yeah, number one's been an issue since I came on the commission. I've been working with Gary on that. Number two, I've got to go with the downtown. I'll tell you what I look at on this downtown, getting this downtown finished. If we, if, if we go with the, the current proposal, the delivery method that you're talking about, and something blows out downtown, it's going to get repaired. It's not going to get replaced. If we get the downtown done first and Great Basin blows out, that's a truck round. There's going to, there's going to be funding to fix that. That's going to become a priority. But this downtown, if we don't get this downtown section done first, I got news for you folks, we ain't never going to see this. We're never going to get the funding allocated to finish that downtown after, once, once Great Basin's done and, and, and the, the center section there, downtown's not going to occur. And downtown, number one, we've invested tons of money into downtown. Number two, we, our economic development for this community, as, as a tourist community of any kind hinges, as being just a, a, a progressive community of any kind hinges on having a downtown that doesn't, that isn't regressing, just constantly regressing. of any kind hinges on having a downtown that doesn't, that isn't regressing, just constantly regressing, buildings emptying, not being maintained. We've got it, and, and part of that is getting this set up properly, getting this, this street done properly, getting the, the improvements done and, and creating something from our side that will attract people to fill up buildings. And I just think that's gotta be.
And it's, and it's just not the downtown buildings. This, this will have a ripple effect to the whole county.
Absolutely.
Uh, and, uh, our, um, the, the mayor is going to be meeting with the director and then also the governor. And I think that as a whole, standing behind the project because of the ripple effect, um, I, I think it's, I think it's important.
So for housekeeping purposes, Mr. Chairman, you have items B, one and two. Two is discussion of possible action, validation of top two concerns. Um, for, for Travis's motion purposes for housekeeping, his motion is on item two. And then we'll do a separate motion to accept the presentation today.
Thank you, sir.
So there is a motion and a second and discussion.
Okay, the motion on the floor by Travis is to make lane struck stop number one and downtown number two. We had a second by Lori. We have a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No. So Travis, Lori, Shane vote in the affirmative. Richard votes no. So passes three to one.
And that's on item two.
That's on item two.
Need a motion to accept the, uh.
I'm gonna do that. So now we're gonna go back there. So motion on item two passes three to one. Item one is a motion to accept the NDOT's presentation that he gave to us today.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Shane and a second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimous. So I, I thank you for coming. I thank you for your presentation. Uh, Lee, I know you'll take back all the comments. So I appreciate you coming up and your, your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on. It's nine thirty and we're really, should we try, let's try to get the NDOTW done here. Nine thirty is Nevada Department of Wildlife. Item one is a presentation discussion only on the wildlife resources in the White Pine County Silver State Trail. Mariah Colada, Eastern Nevada Habitat Biologist. Will you do the Silver State Trail later?
No, this, she's doing a presentation on the impact of wildlife.
Yeah, so it's kind of an overall impact, um, overview of, uh, the EA that the BLM issued several months ago. Um, so like you said, I'm Mariah Colada. I'm the Department of Wildlife. I am the Habitat Biologist out of the Ely Field Office. So just kind of a brief history of the Silver State Trail. Um, two thousand and four, Lincoln County Thor Development Act started the wind down in Lincoln County. Two thousand and six, White Pine came along, um, and they basically had the option to, uh, see if they could ride the Silver State Trail. Two thousand and ten, uh, BLM did the first round of EA. Two thousand and eleven, they signed their finding of no significance. Two thousand and eleven, uh, the county commission had a public special meeting and the project was put on hold. Two thousand and twelve, BLM rescinded their decision. And then two thousand and eighteen, even though that says two thousand and twelve has a typo, BLM requested them to revisit it again. Um, two thousand and eighteen, the BLM provided cooperating agencies and partners with two alternatives. Um, Endow began to interact then, um, to try to minimize impacts to wildlife. And that, uh, basically takes us to, um, April, they released the EA. Um, and then in June, they closed the public comment period and the project has been on hold with the BLM, um, since then. So basically what we ended up in EA was four alternatives, A, B, C being wildlife alternative, D the no action. Um, so next one is going to be a really fast breakdown of what those alternatives were, because I'm gonna go with the assumption that most people did not take fun time to read this document, um, like I got to do. Um, so alternative A is one hundred and ninety-seven miles. It does have a connection to Ely. It goes south to Lincoln's County, but it does not connect with Lincoln County Silver State Trail. It crosses BLM administrative land only, um, no forest service. It does cross private lands. And this one has no highway crossings. Access is primarily through Cape Valley, Butte and Steptoe Valley. Um, I know this map is kind of small. I apologize for that. I know you guys probably seen the PDF. Um, so the black lines up there are, is the proposed route, um, and that's overlaid on top of crucial big game habitat for mule deer, elk and pronghorn, um, primarily summer and winter. Same map, um, except with sage grouse overlaid on it, um, impacting live brooder and et cetera, as well as PHMA and GHMA, which is primary and general how, habitat for sage grouse. Um, B is significantly longer. It is three hundred and thirty-five miles long. Um, it is based off of the two thousand and four alternative. Um, alternative C was the one that the BLM chose back with their previous decision. It has connections in Ely, Lund and Eureka. Again, it extends south to Lincoln County, but does not connect to the Lincoln County Silver State Trail. Eureka and Elko Counties, they do not have the Silver State Trail. Um, and as far as I, what we've heard, uh, they do not have interest in pursuing it. This route utilizes unapproved and unmaintained routes versus alternative A, which is primarily on county roads. This crosses BLM and forest service lands as well as private, has highway crossings and also follows the boundaries of Mount Grafton, Beckett Peak, White Pine and Southeast and Rainforest villages. And again, this is the same kind of maps that you guys saw previously. Um, the route is up there in the black line and the other shading is crucial big game habitat. Um, the red dots are sage grouse, lex. And same map, um, but with sage grouse habitat, um, with main habitats up there for them. And then alternative C, uh, this is a hundred and fifty-three miles. Um, this is an attempt to avoid some of the more crucial areas for wildlife to help minimize impacts to them. It was a modified version of alternative A and B and was developed with, um, Endow with the BLM. It two crosses BLM and private lands, moves along the north and eastern boundaries of Grafton. But, uh, despite, um, you know, our best efforts, there are still significant wildlife concerns with alternative C. It's impossible to avoid everything. It just is. Um, so same map, um, you can see the proposed route. It looks a lot like A with sections taken off. And again, um, the other layers up there are the big game crucial habitats, um, and then there are the sage grouse crucial habitats. Um, alternative D is basically the no action alternative. So basically what that means is everything will stay the same. There'd be no designation. Um, it doesn't change, uh, motorized recreation that currently exist. Um, basically everything stays the same as what's currently issued under the ELY RFP and the US Forest Service Travel Management Plan. So, um, just kind of an overview, as I said, A, hundred and ninety-seven miles, B is three hundred and thirty-five miles, C is a hundred and thirty-three miles. Um, crosses crucial habitat for mule deer, elk, pronghorn, sage grouse, impacts to migratory birds as well as raptors. And that's just the sage grouse overlay again. Um, so the Department of Wildlife, uh, when we reviewed this document, our main concerns was the management plan will not be completed for up to two years until after the BLM makes a decision. Um, we've had past experience with the BLM that a lot of times these management plans do not happen unless the project lead can make sure it happens. And with BLM turnover, we don't have much guarantee there. Um, so this management plan, um, is supposed to evaluate and manage appropriate use levels of the route. Um, this also includes the educational signage and materials, uh, all types of monitoring wildlife recreation, repairing wetland and range land. Um, also of concerns is no traffic studies were conducted, um, so we don't know what our baseline use levels of any of these routes are. Um, there's also discrepancies in the data that the BLM used for their wildlife analysis. Um, they did not use, uh, the most up to date data that Endow provided them. Um, because of that, they had insufficient analysis, um, on their impacts to wildlife. Um, they do not adhere to the BLM sage grouse ARPA, which is the Sage Grouse Land Use Plan Amendment that just came out. Um, cumulative effects, um, was not adequately analyzed. All routes have segments, um, that are in close proximity to lex. And the BLM, uh, at this point in time, has not expressed any interest in trying to pursue any type of seasonal timing restrictions. Um, all routes intersect crucial summer and winter habitat for big game. And we're looking at avoidance probably of those habitats from, from big game because of increased use. And then we're also looking at increased potential for, uh, spread of noxious weeds. And most of these things, again, would not be depressed, uh, addressed until the management plan was developed. Route preparation also was not addressed in EA, so basically users creating new routes, um, because they see something cool over there and they want to go check it out. There's serious concerns about whether the BLM has the resources to even do the monitoring and the maintenance that would be required um, under their own management plan when they do one. And they just make the assumption of incremental increase in motorized use and human presence. Um, there's no definition of what that is, um, nor do they have any information of, um, current baseline in there. That being said, the department has taken the stance that, um, their recommendation is alternative D, which is the no action alternative, as that's going to be the least impactful to wildlife. C does address some wildlife concerns, but still has significant concerns, um, especially with the, uh, discrepancies in EA. If they go with alternative C, the department highly suggests that they need to address the following, um, that's the lack of analysis of impacts due to increased traffic, um, lack of the analysis on the associated roads with the potential for increased use. And they need to update their wildlife section to use current wildlife data. Um, they need to develop the management plan prior to the completion of EA. So take away that, we have up to two years to get around to it.
I have a question for you real quick.
Yeah.
Um, now that the Silver State Trail has been in place down in Lincoln County for a while, does Endow have any hard findings on wildlife disruption down in Lincoln County after the designation of those routes or anything like that?
Um, Lincoln County, um, no, but Lincoln County does not have the amount of sage grouse lex that we deal with.
Anything on the larger game wildlife, pronghorn?
Um, we do see avoidance, um, of areas, um, you know, with increased human activity, um, especially in areas of, I mean, basically with high value for humans because it's pretty and they, people want to go check it out, also tends to be, um, high value for, for wildlife. Um, since Ely is such a hunting centric town, um, you know, we could be looking at animals shifting out of areas because they just don't want to be there because of increased use. Um, does that answer your question?
Any, any specific biological findings related to the Silver State Trail?
No, but again, the BLM basically does, um, they have no monitoring plan for that as well. Um, and that's, that's kind of one of our biggest concerns is, is they just are offering to put something on the landscape and we're not really sure what monitoring we're going to get out of it and how we're going to address, um, impacts. Um, also with the connections to Ely and Lund and Eureka, if alternative B is taken, um, there are certainly some areas closer to town, um, that could see more, more use, which the Lincoln County Trail doesn't really have.
Based on the migration trail that the mule deer have or even the elk are eating, uh, what is the impact if this Silver State went to A, B or C? And you talked about if you do this, you're going to disrupt their, their routes.
Could.
So what, what does Endow see if we did any one of these? Would it have a major impact on the migration trail?
Well, um, that's, if, if we knew what we were, if we had some idea, if we were provided with some idea of what the increased traffic would be other than incremental, I, I don't know, we, we have no definition for incremental. I don't know if they're talking one extra ATV or a hundred and, a hundred and fifty. And again, the BLM and their management plan is supposed to address, um, use levels. But we don't know what the use levels they're going to do are until they complete that. So basically we're trying to base the decision off of incomplete information, which is not something that the department is, uh, super fond of doing.
Public lands, we've all been after the BLM to open public lands for public use. This is my question. This is a trail that's proposed and, and it has a direct north-south link. But by not suggest, by not accepting any one of these, by doing D, which maybe D is the way to go because of lack of information, but by not looking at A or, or B or C and, uh, saying, we don't want any trails through White Pine County for various reasons. So we're telling the BLM, on one hand, we want you to free up public lands for use, and on the other hand, this is my, I don't know if I'm right or I'm wrong. On the other hand, we want you to open up, but don't open it up in my backyard because, so what, it's, it's almost a catch twenty-two to me.
Well, the BLM's current travel management plan allows for motorized travel on any road that is not closed. So as long as there's not a carbonite marker out there that says road is closed, um, it's open for, for travel.
Okay, I got that.
Yeah, or my understanding, all these routes are already there. You could probably spend a lifetime driving around the dirt roads in White Pine County. And what gets me is this is just that the federal designation, we, ninety-five percent of this county is already federally owned. And giving them rights over county roads and, you know, clouding title on private owners and it just, it's just gonna open up a whole can of worms. And as far as more people coming, we're already discovered. I don't think, I mean, the federal government's not going to market this unless Trump tweets about it, you know? Uh, that's just where I'm at on this.
And this is just a discussion update from Department of Wildlife.
We'll talk more about it at one thirty.
That's to the effect of, on, on wildlife and, and their recommendations.
And Travis is right. We have an item of one thirty that's going to be discussing this. And we're listening to your presentation and I appreciate that. I'll get any questions later.
Dan?
I'll, I'll wait to the one thirty agenda item and discuss ours as a cooperating agency with the BLM.
I think that's the right way to do this. Listen to your presentation.
Good information.
And then we go to the one thirty, we'll come back and we'll be discussing all the alternatives and all the.